Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. School Board Member Diane Ralston of the Neapsco District will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. This evening, the public meeting that we set up tonight is specifically for the superintendent and the staff to provide an overview of the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. After the presentation, we'll move to citizen comment time. At this time, I'd like to remind the board members that this meeting is specifically to hear from our staff and the superintendent about the budget, not for any questions from us. We have more than enough time to do that, both, you know, by email and at our work sessions coming up. We'll have two budget work sessions scheduled to take place here at the Kelly Leadership Building, all beginning at 6:00 PM. The first will be Wednesday, February 23, and the second is Wednesday, March 9. So at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. We have our Chief Financial Officer, John Wallingford, who is going to share a brief overview of the budget presentation that was presented during the regular board meeting. So I will, at this time, ask Mr. Wallingford to please go over the FY23 budget, proposed budget.
Brief version of that presentation, so here we go. So, excuse me, fiscal year 2023 highlights, this budget is actually driven by a strategic plan that was put in place this year, and that plan, Vision 2025 Launching Thriving Futures, directs how we're going to spend the $170 million in additional revenue that we're receiving this year. The overall operating and debt service fund budgets for fiscal '23 will be $1.5 billion. Again, that's about $170 million increase over the prior year, or roughly 14% again increase over fiscal '22. Our projected enrollment for next year is going to be just shy of 90,000 students. One or two points I want to make here. This budget does not include federal pandemic money. It does not include SER-1, SER-2, or SER-3 funds. Those were built into our budgets during the year and are part of the carryover process that takes place at the end of the year. This year, we will be providing a 7% average employee pay increase that totals about a $60 million investment in increases in employee pay. So on this next slide, you see two familiar pies or doughnuts, where it comes from and where it goes to. About 48% of our funding comes in the form of state aid from Richmond. The county transfer makes up about 40%, excuse me, 46% of our total revenue streams, with federal other and beginning balance making up the net. Where it goes to, an important point to make, is that just shy of 80% of our total budget annually goes directly to instruction. These slides detail student enrollment growth and enrollment growth in specifically identified populations. What you see on the enrollment chart to the left is a bump at the beginning of that chart in 1920 and '21. That up and down is a function of the pandemic and enrollment losses that we experienced in the year of the pandemic. And then what you see going out into the future is an enrollment growth that initially in '23, we expect to be a couple of hundred students, increasing to about 700 students per year as we move further out along that timeline. The slide to the right, bar chart, shows the growth rate over a five-year period for specific populations. The first one at the very top and moving down, free and reduced, at 8%. English language learners have grown by 19% over the past five years. Our students with special needs, that population has grown by about 8.1% over the last five years. And finally, our general population growth rate over the past five years is just a hair over 0%, just 100 or 200 students more than we had in enrollment five years ago. And the important point to note here is that these student populations, the first three I mentioned, those student populations require more resources to provide a world-class education. So even though our student population isn't rising, the total population isn't rising dramatically, we still do see increases in costs. The next slide, one of my favorite slides, is the change in per pupil spending over the last 2009 to 2023 period. And I'll just mention one or two things briefly here. The bottom line, the orange line, is per pupil enrollment adjusted for inflation. That's per pupil enrollment adjusted for inflation. And what you see is that in 2009, we were spending $10,776 per student. In 2022, the current fiscal year, the year we're currently in, we're spending still, adjusted for inflation, a couple of hundred dollars less than we spent in 2009. Our expectation is based on the budget that we're putting forward, is that that number will exceed the $10,700 from 2009 and be $11,389 per student. The blue line at the top are the actual dollars we are spending, and the important thing to note here is that between the current fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023, our expectation is that our per pupil spend is going to go up by roughly $1,800 per student. That's a pretty dramatic increase year over year. Finally, this chart details our revenues for fiscal '22 and our proposed revenues, our expected revenues for fiscal '23. And if you take a look at the bottom right-hand corner of this chart, what you'll see is an increase year over year between the current fiscal year and the next fiscal year of approximately $173 million, or just a hair over 14.1%. Finally, the last slide here just details our budget timeline going out into the next month or two. February, I'll start with February 2nd. That was the presentation that Dr. McDade and I made to the board last week. You can see on the 7th, this is the meeting we're having tonight. We have another meeting on the 16th, a public hearing, followed by our first budget work session on February 23rd. In March, the 9th and the 16th, we have markup and then the school board approval respectively on those two dates. And finally, in April, on the 5th, the school board will make its customary presentation to the Board of County Supervisors that evening. On the 12th of April, it's our expectation that the county board will announce and set their tax rates. And then finally, on the 26th of April, it's our expectation that the Board of County Supervisors will adopt the budget that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Thank you, Dr. McDade. At this time, we will now move on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who signed up in advance with the clerk to speak on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget may do so when called to the podium. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not, you'll be asked to step aside. We have a total of 10 speakers signed up to speak this evening. When I call your name, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. This can, oh, that's it. So our first three speakers, just to give you a heads up of who the first three are going to meet with. So Mr. Carter Wiley can approach the microphone, and then after that will be JP Raffllo, Ken Nar, and then Ali Imam. First, Mr. Carter Wiley.
Thank you. My name is Carter Wiley. I am at 7524 Gainesville, Gardner Park, Gainesville, Virginia. My name is Carter Wiley. I'm a commercial real estate broker who's been promoting Prince William County for the last 30 years. Superintendent McDade has presented some ambitious goals for Prince William County Board for their 2023 school year. The big question is, where is the county going to find the money for the monies to meet these goals? School revenues are obtained through real estate taxes and personal property tax. The current makeup of this revenue is residential and commercial taxes. Today, the county has a paltry commercial tax base of just 13%, and the balance of these monies are shored up by residences of Prince William County. Ideally, the county strives for a 35% commercial tax base like that found in Fairfax and Loudoun Counties. However, Prince William has a problem. The commercial industrial land inventory is essentially void of any developable land. Prince William County is the second-largest, most populated county in the state of Virginia, yet less than half of the county is in the development area, and the majority of the land in the county is found in the rural crescent. The rural crescent represents 52% of the county area but consists of less than 10% of the population. Many of the Board of Supervisors view this as a favorable area to expand commercial industrial uses, specifically data centers, to increase tax revenue. Expanding these areas will provide the county and its residents the monies needed and sought to meet these ambitious goals for the county, Prince William County schools. Tonight, I'm asking the parents, the teachers, and administrators to actively promote the Board of Supervisors' efforts to expand the development boundaries of the county to meet the needs of its citizenry. Thank you.
JP Raffllo.
Thank you. JP Raffllo, Gainesville District. I've been in Prince William County for 20 years, living on Page's Lane for 14 years, three children, two of which have already gone through the school system, proud to say they did quite well, and a son that's still in eighth grade Bull Run Middle School. So this is a great piece of paper because this is a vision. This is us continuing to move forward as a county, but what it says is more, and you need more money. We have a project that can help you. Carter just spoke to it. The next two gentlemen behind me will speak to it as well. It's time that we began to spend more per pupil than what we've been spending, and this chart that was just shown, shows that. However, at the moment, we're still spending the second lowest of all public county school systems in the Washington DC, greater Washington DC area. It doesn't speak to the fact that you guys last week gave a raise to the teachers. Congratulations. I'm really proud of you for doing that, but it requires more. It requires more money. We have to become more and more competitive with Loudoun County. We lose teachers. We want to start having a school system where, when you walk into Prince William County, you go, you got to see these schools. You got to see what these kids are learning. You got to see what they're up to. That's got to change, and I think the visions here, I think it takes a little bit of guts to pull it off, but it's definitely going to take money. So the Prince William Digital Gateway can produce somewhere between $400 and $700 million of annual tax revenue, of which the school system gets 57-odd percent. That is a ginormous number. Not a real good English major word to use right there, but I think it's appropriate. By the way, it's a little different in here this week than last week. It's actually pretty enjoyable. So what we're here to do is try to help you all. We're trying to help you find funding. We need you to kind of help us as well, though. You putting a word in across town to the Board of Supervisors that this seems to make some sense, as your daily conversations go on, as you talk to people in the school system, let them know what we're really thinking. Allow us to go talk to them. I've tried to do that. In some cases, I've been successful, and others I haven't. But we just want to pass the word as to what this can do for the school system, but also all the other citizens of Prince William County. This could be a tax break on our real estate. This does help first responders. This will be extra funding for parks and youth athletic facilities. So there's a great deal of money that this can provide. We really would love to have your support, and we'll keep coming. We're going to be here. You're probably going to get tired of seeing us because we've got the calendar, and we're just going to keep telling you the same thing. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Mr. Ken Nar.
My name is Ken Nar. I'm from the Gainesville District. I'm a retired U.S. Marine. I'm a former teacher and a former tenure instructional designer. Dr. Latanya McDade rightly targets the ethnic and racial inequalities of the academic scores of some of our minority student populations in her new strategic plan. As the most diverse county in the Commonwealth and the 10th most diverse community in the nation, this inequality should concern us all. This Prince William County School invests the second-lowest amount per student in any county in Northern Virginia. If anything, Dr. McDade should have asked for more money. The student diversity drives greater variation within each classroom. One-size-fits-all instructional approaches will not and cannot solve the learning inequalities in Prince William County schools. To close this gap, textbooks and instructional materials must be grounded in ethnically, ethically, in the ethnically and racially relevant context. The language barriers must seamlessly bridge for and by these students. We will also need to recruit and retain a much larger number of the very best teachers we can find. The impact of students-to-teacher ratios are well documented in the education research and the regular practitioner lessons learned. In a nutshell, we need the best teachers in the state, and they will require significantly more professional development on a regular basis. These teachers will deserve a great, will deserve greater compensation, and they will be the best of the best. The great teacher migration refers to the dynamic circulation of outstanding teachers from one school system to another based on the periodic pay scale changes in Northern Virginia. One pay scale, arc pay scale is currently in the middle of the road. We must be at the top of this list if we truly aspire to provide every child with a world-class education and prepare them to be successful and intrinsically motivated lifelong learners in pursuit of their passions. The overall teacher shortage in the United States is well documented. In order to achieve the stated goals and objectives, the teacher and staff pay scales need to be the highest in the area at a minimum. Our cost-per-student investment must be more in line with that of Loudoun County and Fairfax County. I fully support Dr. McDade's strategic plan. It will require a significant budget increase over the next three to five years. The residential tax base cannot support these increases. The commercial tax base must increase to 35% or more for Prince William County's total tax revenue. I believe the additional commercial tax revenue generated by the Prince William Digital Gateway is a key component of the solution set, and that's what it is. And you can see it from the chart that it's a solution set, and there's no golden goose that's going to lay one egg that's going to pay for everything. This board has to find different revenue sources from various sources to put us at the top of the scale. The Prince William Digital Gateway will make Dr. McDade's strategic vision a reality, and our community's youth will be direct beneficiaries.
Thank you, sir. Ali Imam, and then after him will be Stephen Lorenz, John Crown, and Jeff Fuller.
Dear respected board members, good evening, and thank you for your hard work for Prince William County. My name is Ali Imam, and I'm from Gainesville District. I've been living here in Prince William County for over 21 years now. Two of my sons already graduated from Battlefield High School several years back, and my daughter is now currently a 10th grader in Battlefield High School. I'm excited to hear about your proposed $1.5 billion budget for 2023. Undoubtedly, you're heading in the right direction. However, that is not enough. Prince William County is the second-largest school district in Virginia. Our student enrollment is at least 10,000 more than our neighboring Loudoun County's school enrollment. Yet last week, Loudoun County's school board proposed $1.6 billion for their 2023 budget, which is at least 100 million more than PWC. That was possible for Loudoun County partly because its commercial tax base is much higher than Prince William County's commercial tax base, which is shamefully the lowest among the neighboring counties. So one way to increase commercial tax base is welcoming developments of more data centers in Prince William County. Loudoun County collects about 600 million from its data centers annually. I'm pretty sure you know about PW Digital Gateway Project, which is proposing more than 2,100 acreages of new data centers development in Page's Land Corridor. PW Digital Gateway will generate an estimated $700 million in annual revenue, tax revenue to our county, of which estimated $300 million for our schools. Just imagine extra $300 million for schools can do for us. Yes, current 7% raise to the teachers are good, but not excellent. We can use that extra money to give even better raise to our talented teachers, as well as attract new highly qualified teachers to our county. Or even we can use that extra money to build a new four-year STEM school compatible to Fairfax County's Thomas Jefferson High School, which is also known as TJ, and Loudoun's Academy of Science. I recall when my older son was going to TJ during his freshman year, he was spending more than five hours every day just to commute to and from TJ from our house in Cat Harp in Virginia. We ended up pulling him out. I earnestly request all of you, every principal, teachers, and students, to support the Board of Supervisors to approve the PW Digital Gateway, which can help our schools to become one of the greatest in the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Lorenz, a resident of the Gainesville District, a PhD physicist, and a leader of a small tech company located in Manassas. Prince William, as you hear over and over, is the second-largest, second-most populated county in the state. However, it has an amazingly, embarrassingly bad English, small commercial tax base. The burden on the residents is 85% to carry the load for all of the services, including the schools of this county. While the commercial side is only funding 15%, a much healthier ratio would be 65% residential to 35% commercial. However, the county is basically completely out of adequate land to support further commercial development. And that's not, you know, any particular industry, for any industry. There is, there simply is no land that's suitable for rezoning, and this is due to something that occurred 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, 22 years ago. One that was set up by the actions of the Board of Supervisors in this county 21 years ago by the creation of what many call the rural crescent. This basically is the western half and much of the southern half of the county, an area that's 50% of the area where only 10% of the population lives. This area, you know, commercial development there has basically been forbidden. It does happen, but it is very difficult and very complicated and very minimal. However, this board of, the current Board of Supervisors is very supportive of making sweeping changes to that and greatly expand the commercial development here. Unlike other, and a particular issue to us is the expansion of data centers throughout the rural, throughout an area of the rural crescent. Data centers can be eco-friendly, create little noise, have minimal impact on the surroundings. But one important thing as far as the tax base support, they provide a lot of taxes, but they don't add the load, a load to the schools. So you get the money, but you don't, it doesn't increase your burden. So I'm asking that every principal, teacher, parent, supervisor, and administration support, actively support the Board of Supervisors in making these changes and creating areas where commercial development can once again take place in this great county of ours. Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Crown was unable to make it tonight.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'll take him off the list. Well, next will be then Mr. Jeff Fuller. Then after him will be Tim Kissler, Maggie Hansford, and then Jalen Custis. So Mr. Fuller.
Hello, Board. Dr. McDade, a few neighbors. One thing I've learned is that COVID mandates are a lot more exciting than budget meetings. This is the first budget meeting I've attended. I really didn't know exactly what to expect, but I read the briefing that you provided, and it raised a lot of questions in my mind. So I'm just going to ask them, knowing that you can't answer them, but perhaps I'll ask them in writing or through FOIA requests. And with regard to the price per pupil, I don't think that's a, I think that's an interesting measure, but I wonder if we couldn't get down to return on investment? Not just price per pupil. What's the return on investment? And how would you measure that? But I don't want to get into that. I want to know where the Marshall Plan is to recover this school division from the losses of COVID. The plan did not seem to address the huge deficit that has to be made up. It seems to me like you'd want to have some kind of a, I call it a Marshall Plan. Now, I've heard from my member, Ms. Wall, that there is some kind of a plan out there. I haven't seen it. I'd like to see what the plan is. Maybe I didn't understand that, so I don't want to put that on Ms. Wall. The plan that Dr. McDade had approved last week has funding for social, emotional learning consultants or contractors, as I understand it. Specifically, funding is provided for, with the support of school-based SEL coaches funded by the Pewix Heels Initiative, whatever that is. Now, we don't have time to get into what SEL is, but I would hope everybody in this room understands what the implications of that are. There's funding for school staff trained in restorative practices. Think about Mr. Dar that was here with his daughter. Restorative justice. It sticks in my craw, and it irritates me, and I suspect there's more of that to be found here in Prince William and other counties, where we're basically passing along the problems and exacerbating them. I want to know how much the Equity Office costs. How many people are employed there? What's the cost of the Equity Office? Is that, is that something I could ask? When I see the distribution of costs, it's obviously mostly labor. I'm curious to know how much of the labor is broken out between, oh, I'm sorry, I'm up, between teachers and people that are in the business of, above the school level. Thank you. I'm sorry to take too much time.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Mr. Tim Kissler.
Hi. Tim Kissler, resident of Gainesville, product of Prince William County Schools. I went to Ripon in '73 and graduated from Woodbridge in '79. That was a time of conflict between land use planning in the county and schools, despite the fact that Garfield and Woodbridge delivered in the '74-'75 timeframe at virtually the same time there was overcrowding in schools. As a result, we had, at least in Woodbridge, year-round schools. I was agreeing. That meant my summer vacation was in February, and the fact that I had after-school activities meant that there was no summer vacation. I thought that was a policy failure, and I'm here to talk about how the school board might interact with the Board of County Supervisors in a positive way, and it's with regard to the PW Digital Gateway. I see it as a great boon for both the county and the schools, and an opportunity I see it as a great boon for both the county and the schools, and an opportunity in a time where, right now, there is housing demand in Prince William County that's not being met. The school board planning staff is always in the position of fighting back against any new residential that might generate K through 12 kids. Data centers would generate none. I think that Prince William County Schools have a great opportunity before you. I think you're going to have, you've got demand now. I think you're going to have a lot of demand in the future. The governor's school is looking for funding, and I think this would be a great place for you to look to and to support the county and county staff and the Board of Supervisors as they analyze this. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Maggie Hansford.
Thank you, Chair Latif, Superintendent McDade. My name is Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk. I just want to applaud you all for an amazing budget that increases our per-pupil spending that's investing in our classrooms. A lot of times we come here, I'm a parent of three boys that go to our schools, elementary, middle, and high, and we speak about a lot of things, but I'm so glad to hear so many people speak so positively about our teachers. I'm here to speak in favor of the budget because it really, truly does reflect where our priorities lie, and it's within our students and staff. Right now, we have classroom teachers working here for 15 years, and they just moved past $60,000 a year. $60,000 a year, being a professional as an educator in Prince William County. That isn't a livable wage. It's a hard way to find a pathway to retire. These are things that we need to ensure that they are a priority for our students and our staff, because it is important for our educators to have a pathway to retire, because that means that they'll be able to stay here and they'll be able to work with our amazing students year after year. And that means my boys, you know, my oldest son will maybe have the same teachers as my middle son and my younger son, and that's important. It's important our teachers live where they work. It's extremely important that our community, the people who work in our community live in our community. So I appreciate you, Dr. McDade. I thank the school board. I appreciate this meeting being very relaxed and comfortable, and I truly believe that this budget reflects our priorities, and I thank you.
Thank you. And then our last citizen for Citizen Comment Time, Jalen Custis.
Thank you. Ooh, I came a little underdressed. Anyway, hello, I'm Jalen Custis. I'm Woodbridge District. I'm the SE President at Forest Park High School. I had a pleasure in meeting Dr. McDade at Battlefield, Superintendent McDade, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board. I've, you're probably wondering why as a student here talking about the budget, but I believe that the budget affects us, the students, more than anyone, I believe. And I went through this, and I was like wondering what could be improved, and I do see that there should be some type of improvements. The budget calls for nine behavior specialists, and that's $900,000. And there's also 15 career counselors, which is 1.6 million dollars. And I believe we should invest in counselors. If I, I don't know if it's there, but that focus on mental health, because I, as SE President, I've worked with a lot of students and talked to them, and their, on their mind is mental health. It's like, since the pandemic and stuff like that, mental health has been a struggle for them. Also, I would like to hear more about this No Place For Hate support thing. I believe that is a great thing. Recently, at Forest Park High School, there was incident involving a student using racial rhetoric and stuff like that. So I believe if that's what it's for, there should be addressed. And also, there's only 6.9% of these funds going to facilities management, and I believe that more should go, not even, that's not even a double-digit number. Currently, our Wi-Fi at Forest Park High School is not the best, and there's issues. And I know not only at Forest Park, but at other schools. Overall, I don't have anything else to say about that, and I thank the school board for letting me speak here, and I hope that I can come back to speak, and I hope that you guys hear me and hear my concerns. And I do look forward to coming back here again next week to talk about more other issues. Again, thank you, Dr. McDade, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for your time. Awesome, Mr. Justin. I had your wife for English class. She was a great teacher. Thank you all. Have a good day. Have a good night.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, that concludes our Citizen Comment Time, and we thank you all for coming and participating. Certainly more interest in our budget this year than we've had in a number of years. Just to remind everyone, so today is a public meeting, which we normally do every year as part of our rolling out of the budget. On February 16th, as part of our regular school board meeting, we'll have a public hearing, which is by law, all school boards in Virginia are required to have a public hearing regarding the budget every season, and that will be our official public hearing, which will be set up somewhat similarly. We'll have some time for folks to speak towards the budget, and then we'll roll into our normal school board meeting. On the 23rd is a Budget Work Session, and then on March 9th, another Budget Work Session for the school board. 16th, the school board will approve the budget and CIP, and then in April, we'll take it over to the County Board of Supervisors, and over a few dates there, try to get this budget passed. So we thank everyone who's taken an interest, and we continue to hope you take an interest and tell your friends to take an interest. And with that, we will conclude this evening's meeting. Thank you all.